Thank you for coming. I would like to call to order this regular board meeting of the Hicksville Exempted Village School. Except Mike's not here.
I'll start.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Altman?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Mahler?
Here.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Here. Sorry, Mike, I didn't realize you weren't here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just remind Mike to turn. Okay. First of all, I would like to thank Mr. Farrell. Is he here? No. So, he hosted the board members upstairs with some of the sixth graders, and so we just thank him for that opportunity. We're grateful for that. And moving right along, oh, and thank you to the rest of you that are here. We always like having visitors. Mr. Hoffman, technology report.
Yes, Mr. Countryman and I, Mr. Countryman and I had a conversation a little while ago, and we were talking about Mrs. Bell. Everybody here knows Mrs. Bell. She's retiring unfortunately after longer than I've been here. I've been here 20 years, so she's been at it a very long time. And how are we going to replace Mrs. Bell, what do we want to do moving forward? And so, the discussion was posed of can we do some moving of jobs and things, and can things organized in a different manner to allow for a full three building structure? And so, we're looking at replacing Mrs. Bell. Chime in here, Mr. Altman, as you see fit, with a middle school secretary. And some of the job responsibilities of Mrs. Bell will be, is going to be divided among the three secretaries, as well as I picking up some of the responsibilities as well. So, Mr. Countryman wanted me to ask if you guys had any questions, concerns, thoughts, or things about the change that was imposed?
In particular, the EMIS. I know you girls and guys had asked some questions about the EMIS responsibilities, and I had a conversation with Mr. Hoffman about that. And he is the final go-to person on the EMIS, and does the checking of anyone else that enters information, is what you would...
And one of the things I told Mr. Countryman was, everybody, in essence, is responsible for EMIS. Anybody who touches Power School, anybody who has anything to do with attendance or classes or teaching, it all comes back and it all goes with the state. But when it all comes right down to it, everybody comes to me, and then final certification is put through Mr. Countryman and myself. And I understood that there were some questions and concerns about that, because the running joke of EMIS world is, there's two people in the district that make money, the EMIS coordinator and the treasurer. Everybody else spends it, which seems a little strange, but that's where the funding flow goes. It does come through the EMIS world, or the student headcount, all the special education and things like that, and also through grants and things, through Mr. Owen and taxes and things of that nature. So, generally, there are two major areas that really need to be done well, and with precision, and those two areas are hit. And Mr. Countryman had some concerns about, okay, we pull Rita and we train someone else, what's going to happen with all those pieces? And I've known for about five years, Mrs. Bell's been being very seriously about retiring, but she enjoys her job. And until the COVID season really hit, and she's getting a little older, she's finally came to the point where, okay, I'm going to hang up my EMIS hat and stay home with her husband. So, we've been doing some things in the background that nobody hear you about. I've been taking over certain roles that she's been doing to make sure, and some of the things have been in Power School, I could just do more efficiently than she was able to do. And so, that's kind of what we've been doing. And also, next year, we're changing a little bit how attendance is done. The state made some rule changes on attendance, and the House Bill 410, they are very, very specific about how they want attendance done. We're doing it legally, but not quite to the precision that they would prefer. So, if we're not doing anything wrong, we can just do it better. And now is a great time to make that change. And the other ones have done that change last year, and some did a year prior. So, that's some areas. So, everybody is going to relearn how to do certain things. Well, it's a great time to change up our structure a little bit, and work through that process. So, hopefully that answers some of the questions. But if you have questions, please ask me. Absolutely.
When we had gone to the State School Board Conference, it was talked about that there are some workshops that are EMIS training type things. Okay? So, if all three of those people are going to take on different parts, do they all need to do that workshop? Does just the new person need to do it?
Not necessarily. When you guys are talking EMIS at a lot of these workshops, they're talking about my job. What I'm referring to is, how do we put in attendance on a daily basis? And that's the major portion that's going to change for the secretaries. The other portion that's going to change is for special ed, making sure the special ed codes are put in. But when the final go-through comes, it's going to be me, and I'm going to go back and double-check all of them. But it's the clerical of putting in the information. It's nothing that we really need to get outside training for, because we've been doing it in-house for years. It's just a matter of taking, okay, now you have a third, you have a third, and you have a third, and balancing it out in that way.
Do you have to do workshops?
I do all the time. All the time. I actually have an every-two-week meeting with the local EMIS coordinators, and we go through, okay, what are you doing, what are you doing? It's almost like study table in high school. It's the same kind of deal. So, yeah, we do that, and the state sponsors some stuff. We go through those trainings. We have a monthly with the state. I sit on the project committee that develops the Power School side of the state reporting. I've been doing that for years and years and years. But, yeah, we do a lot of things in the background for training to make sure we are keeping up, because it is a constantly moving battle. And it's something I haven't talked to you through in a couple of years since I've talked about EMIS. So, it's a constantly moving thing, and they're making changes that sometimes are small changes, and sometimes, like House Bill 410, they're really big changes.
So, when you say you're dividing it into thirds, I mean, I get that. So, when all of that information has to come, it comes to you about who's here? I'm looking at the attendance side right now. I'm running through my head. So, the elementary teachers will report to the elementary secretary to Pam. The middle school, to whomever the middle school secretary will end up being, in the high school goes to Tara, right?
Yes.
So, do they all have to be in a certain time, or am I misunderstanding that from what my school does?
Well, basically, what we've been doing at seven through 12 grades before is, in the classroom, they do period by period attendance. And as a high school teacher, you understand that. What the state wants us to do is what we've been doing in the elementary building for the last couple, two or three years. When they made the House Bill 410, she was the easiest to change, so that's the one we went after changing. So, as a parent, I bring my student in. We're an hour and a half late because we had a doctor's appointment. What Pam will do is she marks an absence for that period of time, puts down the exact time when I walked at the door, sends the kid with a note off to class. Teachers on their side, they don't see any difference, other than when it comes in, they're going to see, okay, there was that one time walk that was not in presence. For the high school, they would have to figure out, okay, where in the period does this fall, and we have rules for that and all those kinds of things. Well, now, it will be, there's going to be an attendance period that will be just a short little bit, right before the school day actually starts. So, they'll mark that period. And then, throughout the day, teachers will still do their attendance just as normal. But that period is where the clock time will be set, okay, he was two and a half hours late. So, that won't mark those four five teacher periods wrong. It will just, they'll do their attendance. Okay, they were absent, they were absent. But what's getting recorded in the state, all based off that one first quote-unquote period. And that's where you can put the times in and get it down to the minute, which is really what the state wants us to calculate. Because we're no longer doing the whole calendar as days, so you can miss X number of days. Well, now, it's a total of hours that you can miss. So, that changed it up. So, in order to make everything else balance, they want everything down to minutes, so we can calculate hours.
And what's nice about that, too, is we're still respecting the teachers and their time, what's important to them, and knowing who was there and who was out there in their class, get powerful and powerful. But like Matt said, the bigger thing from the EMIS side is, the kid showed up at eight o'clock and left at 2:30, that's what the state wants to know. The kid showed up at 9:15 and left at 3:03, that's what the state wants to know. Doesn't matter why, where you were at in the building, it doesn't matter, any of that stuff. And we're also going to streamline some things that Mrs. Bell's been doing. It's going to help with the amount of, I guess, changes and input into Power School.
So, any other questions?
I think you really covered it. You know, our concern is just that we know that EMIS is so much more than just attendance, and just how many other things that affects. And so, we just wanted to make sure that we were on top of it, and that, you know, all your explanation was great.
I've lost a lot of sleep over this whole day, that I'm really sure she's going to retire.
In one way, I'm sorry, but on the other hand, thank you very much.
It is, and it's one of those things where you know it's going to happen. Just do your best due diligence to get everything right, the best you can, and move forward. And there's going to be, there's going to be hiccups, I promise you. As we move forward, there's going to be some hiccups. But in the long haul, I think it's going to be better for all parties involved, and we're going to be more accurate, we're going to be more diligent about making sure everything's working right. And it's, it'll be a good thing, I think.
And they're pretty much doing it already.
Yeah. For the elementary building, it's really not going to be much of a change, other than all of a sudden Pam's only going to have to worry about pre-school, grade, grade, and fourth. And then the middle school teacher, middle school teacher, here we go, that's the middle grade. The middle school secretary will do the middle school ban, and then nine through 12. So, attendance-wise, some of the other things are getting smaller for some, and it's coming together. But like, some of the things that Mrs. Bell put in before was the special education, IEP things, and those types of items. That'll be divided. One of the things that's not going to be done by anybody but me is, okay, who's in the sports, and we have to report all those, all those kinds of things. I'm going to take care of that. So, that's the one I'm going to do.
Isn't Mrs. Purnin involved with the special ed portion?
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Countryman. Mrs. Purnin and I work hand-in-hand to make sure that special education stuff is accurate. I get reports back from the state all the time, or Liz, monthly-ish, someone that may be on a list. Okay, here's what I have. Some of these, I can calculate why they're not what they are, why they are what they are. What's going on with these three kids? So, she'll go through, she'll look at the list, she'll check it out, she'll pull up her reports, and we compare notes, and so you should move forward.
Well, typically, too, when we go to IEP meetings off-campus, like, we're the ones that bring back the sheets. So, I assume that we'll be helping out just when we're attending the meetings, making sure maybe that that would be the finishing check mark, to make sure that the process is done.
So, to clarify, you know, we don't have to worry about this person that's coming in, that's not going to be an overwhelming thing for. And I think, for me, you know, I would think that would be a big concern. Like, you don't, you don't want any of these secretaries to feel overwhelmed, because they already are kind of like the main vein and artery of school, so.
Honestly, I think it's going to make it easier.
I think taking off two real levels from being secretary, and then adding the EMIS to as well, it almost cancels each other out. And then on a parent side for middle school, having a middle school secretary where the parents can go to and not have to say, okay, I have a seventh grader here that's Tara's side, and then I have a sixth grader here that's Pam's side, and doing things differently. It's very hard, and even calling phone calls would get a lot easier without having a middle school secretary.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much.
Technology report.
That works.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Altman?
First, I want to start off by talking about Madison Stockman. She's our new middle time substitute teacher, and she's doing an excellent job jumping into school and helping out where needed. Currently, she's helping proper the state test for our middle school students. And from day one, she jumped in and took charge of it right away. And then after she's done, she comes in with, you know, certain, some jobs here, or fill in the period here, even sometimes looking at Pam in the office. We're currently in the middle of state testing. Last week, we completed the ELA portion of our test, and we're currently working through the math part of our test. And then starting next week, we have our science for grades five and eight. It's important to remember that attendance is very important during state testing, as we want our students to test with their peers, and to ensure that the test goes smoothly. I'd like to give a big shout out to Mrs. Chamberlain here. As a teacher, I never realized how much stuff goes on behind the scenes with state testing, and Mrs. Chamberlain's the mastermind behind it all. The logistical work that goes into it is incredible, and she's doing such a good job of organizing and running fully for our students. Along with testing, our teachers are doing a great job for their final test prep. For example, Ms. Reese is doing multiple-week theme test prep, where students are completing tasks amongst their teams, trying to gear up ready for the test. And they seem to be really liking it. We're here at the Hicksville Shake. It's going to be held on May 15th, June 7th. That was part of the reason why the sixth graders talk about gratitude with you guys. The sixth grade teachers are working with their students on soft skills needed for their future. The students will be ready to showcase themselves in our three-round competition toward judges volunteering for our community. It's neat interacting with the community, bringing them into the shake, where they can really see such a great job our teachers are doing, and such a great job our students are doing in middle school. And then, finally, Mrs. Chamberlain's hosting her end-of-year celebration for her rocks program on May 22nd. Permission slips were sent home around spring break. Please make sure to return those as soon as possible. During the celebration, she'll be teaching the self-defense part of the rocks program, celebrating the girls and who they are on the inside. And the girls will end the day by doing a craft highlighting three inward qualities they want to celebrate about themselves. And then they'll lunch with the guest speaker as well. Thank you.
I didn't catch the name of the substitute that you said at the beginning.
Madison Stockman, from Bryan.
Miss Kaufman?
We actually began our math state testing next week. We completed, third- and fourth grade students completed the ELA portion of the test a week before spring break, and then we finished up once we came back, with just some of the kids that were either in quarantine or sick during that we did our testing. We plan to announce this year's, or the next year's class list again on the last day of school. We started this tradition maybe three or four years ago, where the kiddos will get to travel on the last day of school to their next year's teacher and do some fun activities. A lot of times, the teachers kind of prepare their bulletin board for next year with their pictures and such. And just a reminder, you know, to the parents, that we don't take requests for teachers, but I'm always open to hear any valid concerns. Also, something that I think is going to be really neat for us to be able to offer this summer is, with our ESSR funds from the state, we're going to be able to offer some summer intervention to our kiddos. So, the teachers have been working on a list of some of the students that would benefit from summer intervention, and this will take place in June. I'm not sure if we'll do a two-week program with four days, or a four-week program of two days. But more information will be going home in the book bags of the kiddos, so just be watching out for that. And we could even possibly be providing some intervention opportunities in August as well.
Mr. Slattery?
Amazing how quick this Monday night rolls around each month, isn't it? As we all know, we've had a great year considering COVID-19 requirements, and of course, all these restrictions we've been dealing with. But I'm in shock, it's the fourth quarter. We're beyond spring break. You know, prom's coming this way, and we're almost halfway through the sports season for the spring. It's just amazing, we're almost there. I think it doesn't help having a commencement for Memorial Day weekend for the first time in 50 years, just maybe, you know, graduation's next month, usually it's in June. An extra week or two does matter. Anyway, state testing and scheduling are two major focus items right now in high school. Scheduling is going well. I will say that we're slowly seeing an increase in college credit plus programming, which is, you know, definitely a good thing for parents, and it's a good thing for students. But at the same time, it provides additional challenges to high school and our scheduling. But again, it's exciting to see the kids taking advantage of that opportunity. State testing, like they said, is well underway. Last week, the high school also completed their ELA two test, which is sophomore English. This is the first year that we do not have ELA one, which is a freshman test, so that's exciting. Add a skill back, at least one test. And then, of course, this week, we're working on math also, which is algebra one and geometry, which is freshman and sophomore math. And then we'll move into next week, which will be social studies, which is American history and government, and of course, biology for science. Our one-to-one test screening and our small group test reading is going very well. I know we have a few of our best subs that are working, one along with the kids, and small group with the kids, along with the admin team, counselors, and everyone. And then, you know, you have a large group testing actually happening in this area right here. We're typically testing roughly, I'd say, 40 to 45 kids on average, with, you know, trying to maintain that three-foot of distance between the kids. Just a few reminders on a couple items here. You know, each month, I work with the other GMC principals and the athletic directors. And again, it's hard to believe this, but you know, we're working on finalizing holding coming into the GMC next year. They will start competing in the fall of 2020 in the Green Meadows Conference, and of course, we're excited about that. And at the same time, you know, we hope that whole gate transitions well to the BBC, and they start competing in that conference next year. The high school musical will take place at the Hoover House this weekend. Showtimes are Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, and of course, there's one on Sunday afternoon. We're, of course, restricted by the COVID-19, and I believe there are 25% capacity at Hoover. I don't know exactly how many tickets that is, but I know that the goal is to provide as many opportunities as possible for family and friends of all the kids to get in there first. And then, of course, if there's tickets available, which I believe there are, and you have interest, you know, please contact Hoover. Of course, Mrs. Burkin with those tickets. Another senior trip update, things are going well. Again, our goal is leave Tuesday, May 4th, I think, at roughly 10:00 PM. We will return on Saturday, May 8th, roughly 5:00 AM. Again, we are going to Gatlinburg, Tennessee. The itinerary, it looks like a lot of fun, a lot of hiking, whitewater rafting, a lot of outdoor activities. And that was our goal, is that we're going to do a senior trip to be outdoors and outside. Again, because we felt that would be the safest way to have this awesome experience. And we're all excited for our seniors. And when it comes to participation, we actually have 40 seniors signed up to go on this trip, so that's good, too. That's a great number of seniors to go. The junior senior prom is Saturday, May 1st. Prom walk-in will be from roughly 6:00 PM to 6:45 PM, followed by dinner at 7:00. When the dance concludes, of course, the seniors will celebrate post-prom in Georgetown Bowl, which is kind of like the sister location for Crazy Men's. So, again, we're excited about that opportunity for all of our, you know, juniors from last year who do not receive a prom, who are seniors now. And of course, our current juniors are having the opportunity to celebrate a true junior senior prom. But that, I'm ready for it to be done, because my wonderful wife decided to be a class advisor. She's making like every centerpiece by hand in all the decorations, so our house is loaded with everything. So, I'm ready for her stress level to go down for all that stuff being on my house.
Something for me to look forward to.
Maybe I'll just drop off at your house.
There you go.
Reminders on two items. Again, Four County Career Center Award Program is May 25th. It's a Tuesday. It's actually going to be virtual this year, and considering the logistical nightmare of what they have, if you ever attended that event, I mean, there's 23 school districts, and there has to be, there's probably 2,000-plus people there. Well, and that's not including students, that's probably just family and friends. There's no way that we could have the people together. So, again, that will be virtual. And then I need to remind everyone every week of this one commencement, it's Memorial Day weekend this year, May 30th, 2021. If you were so shocked on that, including myself at times. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. I do have an update from Denny. So, he said, overall, Four County District is running strong with both personnel and financially. The district is approximately 2,000, I'm sorry, 200,000, the low budget for the year. Four County awards will be virtual again this year. The Auto Tech has purchased new toolboxes, replacing their original ones from 1970s. Salaries and benefits are 81% of the school budget. And then, finally, the HVAC replacement starts June 1st. Adult education is currently going through a reaccreditation, which is done every three years. And they have 46 juniors inducted into the Honor Society. So, that was all from Denny. Mr. Countryman?
Yes. You'll see later on in the agenda where we're going to approve the buy-now test kits, but I wanted to let you know that we've received those from the health department. They're on a first-come, first-served basis for people. I think the objective, the biggest objective with doing the test kits and making them available for employees or students is that you can get a test within 20 minutes of either positive or negative for COVID, which will eliminate that maybe one- or two-day wait period. And so, obviously, if it's negative, then they wouldn't have to quarantine. So, that's the biggest advantage of it. So far, we've really only given out five of those. But they are here and available upon request or upon our recommendation. And none of those tests for students are done here. It's actually a test that's sent home, and there's an online tutorial that the parent does that walks them through the process of doing it. And then, they are to report their, to the health department, their findings on that, so. The second round of vaccinations were given on April 9th to our employees who had already received their first vaccination on February 26th. The health department is now putting together a vaccination day and offering it to students 16 and older, and also to any employees that may have not gotten it the first time around that would like to get it now. I don't know what that day is yet. The health department had me send a survey out to anyone 16 and older, and then the results of that survey went directly to the health department. The last time I had looked at the results of that survey was last week, when Jamie, the health commissioner, contacted us all. And there was several students who did indicate that they were interested in getting that. I actually thought the number would be a little bit higher, but maybe there's more on to that now. So, the health department will be facilitating that, and they'll let us know when that date's going to be. And it will most likely be right here in our school for the students. In the new building, the casework's been installed in all the four of the classrooms. It looks awesome. The building is right on track still. Things are moving along very well. Mr. Stevenson and Mr. Gaggen, our two art teachers, are currently working on a mural in the weight room, and that's looking really, really nice as well. So, of course, we know they would do a good job there, pretty awesome. And I hope to do another virtual video tour of the building later this week, and get that out to parents again, like I've done in the past. I think they appreciate that, and you can see the progress. So, we're coming along real nice on that. Other than that, it's the usual end-of-year rush. I can't believe there's only 31 student days left of school. And just like any other school year, it gets crazy this time of the year of everything. You look at your list and say, oh, my gosh, it's never going to get all done. And it always does, but we're at that point already, and I'm just thankful that we were here all year. And I know, in talking to the kids just a little bit ago, I talked to them about that, and they were all thankful about that, too. So, that's a good thing. And hopefully, that little four-letter word, "no," does not happen tomorrow night and Wednesday. So, hopefully, that just bypasses this. So, that's all I have.
You know, it is really quite amazing, and kudos again to the admin team and everybody, that we have 31 days left. And here, back in August, we were hoping for two weeks.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, we really wanted two weeks of the students in the building, you know, and here we are.
Yeah. I was talking to Kevin Miller here a couple weeks ago, and his kids were just going back in Columbus. They've been out all year.
I think Bull and Green's been out. I think maybe, I don't know if they've gone back yet, which I didn't realize there was anybody even around us that wasn't in school.
Right. Yale, his oldest son is in Cincinnati, University of Cincinnati, and he's been virtual all year. It'd be really challenging, I think, for, you know, what a rip for a college kid to not have that freshman year experience. So, but he'll survive, like all of them.
Just very grateful.
Do you know how many teachers had the shot, or what our percentage was?
Um, I want to...
That took advantage of that?
Yeah, I want to say it's around 80%, Mrs. Jones.
That's very impressive. That is amazing. I don't know any place that has 60%, much less 80%.
Yeah, now, that's not just teachers, but that would have been our bus drivers, our custodians, everybody. I believe that would have been around 75, 80%, if I'm not mistaken.
That is. All right. No other comments. We'll move along to the minutes and financials. I need a motion, please.
I'll move.
Steph.
Second.
And Galen, thank you. Minutes from the regular board meeting of March 15th, 2021. Treasurers' consent agenda items, cash reconciliation as of March 31st, 2021, financial statements for March 2021, amended certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year 2021 as presented, total general fund resources of $14,461,511.93, and total resources for all funds of And total resources for all funds of $25,461,492.92. Amended fiscal 2021 permanent appropriations as presented. Total general fund appropriations of $11,877,203.42. And total appropriations for all funds of $21,365,735.11. Consolidation of Fund 018-9012, the Elementary Teacher Pop Fund, to Fund 018-9011, the High School Teacher Pop Fund, and renaming Fund 0189011 to Hicksville Elementary Exempted Village School District Teacher Pop Fund. Approving the following then and now certificates. Appeal for Antwerp Schools for $8,888.86. And approve the following academic athletic building construction project change order for Alexander Bebaut for negative $458 for the weight room flooring. And then finally, accept the following donations. $500 from Sweetwater Sound, Inc. for the High School Musical. Any comments? Mike?
I don't have anything to add. If there's any questions, fire away.
Always like to see that negative there on the change order, that's nice.
Yeah. It's not real big, but it is a negative, isn't it? That's a positive.
Right.
If that makes any sense.
There's some good math in that school. So the change to Antwerp School, the vendor preschool excess cost, like what is that? Explain that.
It is, excess cost is associated with open enrollment students. In this case, the student left us, went to Antwerp. There's special ed related costs with this student, and so any amount above what Antwerp is getting through state funding, we have to pay.
For how long?
So as long as the student's enrolled in, in, open enrolling out to another district, and there's these costs. So that is that. We have money coming in, too. On our excess costs, we're going to about break even with what we spend out and what we have coming in. It's just this one is presented to you guys because it's then and now over $3,000 amount.
Okay. Gotcha.
Thank you.
Also, with the deduct change order there, our change orders on the year are about But it's not, that number's been, been kind of softened by that. There's $75,000 that was built in the bid for the project, and of that $75,000, we've only, we've only accessed about $11,000, $12,000 of it. So there's about $63,000 there. Essentially, that's out the change orders of 80 some thousand dollars. So overall, we're just slightly above what that $70,000 amount that was set for, in the bids. So feel pretty good there. We do have amounts still remaining that hasn't been encumbered. Of course, there's things that can come up, could come up, and obviously, do come up throughout the project. So we'll know more here in the next couple of months, as we get near the end, where we finish. But as of now, we're under budget and on time.
Correct.
That is awesome.
Good news.
Any other questions are coming? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Idan?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0. Need a motion for employment of certified staff?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Minda and Craig, thank you. Recommend to approve Aubrey Giddings as a certified substitute for the 2021 school year. Recommend the following teachers to be issued a continuing contract, Sean Bergman and Melissa Lydell. Recommend the following teachers be issued a three-year limited contract, Jamie Altman, A.J. Klausing, Ryan Meiser. Recommend the following teachers be issued a two-year limited contract, Mackenzie Coleman, Rachel Werman. Recommend issuing a one-year contract to Kate Hagerty as classroom teacher with three years' experience at a master's degree for the 2021 school year. Recommend issuing a one-year contract to Brianna Color as a classroom teacher with two years' experience at the bachelor's degree with a 2021, 22 school year. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 21, 22 school year. Jeff Haught, co-head golf coach, 33%. Paul Payne, head cross-country coach. Lucas Smith, head football coach. Tony Tier, co-head golf coach, 67%. Comments or questions?
We have Kate Hagerty and Bri Color both here tonight. They've both served as Title I teachers here for a couple of years now. Great employees and nice having them around, and they get pulled all directions this year they've been. So we're looking forward to having them on our staff as classroom teachers. So Bri will be taking Mrs. Kreitz's position, and Kate is her own position because it was a fourth grade position. So we eliminated a third grade, but moved it to a fourth grade. So one of our third grade teachers is actually Mrs. Slattery, who's moving to Mrs. Altman's room, and Mrs. Altman is moving into Mrs. Countryman's preschool, or pre-kindergarten room. And the current third grade class has four teachers now and needs four teachers next year, which is why Kate's being added as that fourth grade teacher for next year because of the size of that class. So, does that make sense?
Yep. Yep. Thank you for the explanation.
We're glad to have them. We will miss them, but we will miss them as title teachers for sure, right, Mrs. Hoffman?
For teachers, that has got to be, I mean, from my perspective anyway, a lot of fun. The musical chair type thing and getting, teaching, getting to teach some other group.
Mrs. Jones, you wouldn't agree?
They do it with a smile. I did it.
Well, I have to say, I'll miss your wonderful decorating and your very unique dressing for special days. I always look forward to what you guys dress up as. You've done an amazing job.
Be awesome.
You girls have any comments or anything you want to say, or you don't have to, I'm just...
We haven't voted yet, just so you know.
We'll let you vote first.
No pressure.
We are so happy to have you guys.
Yes, we are.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Madam President. Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Idan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have, I need a motion for a action item. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, thank you, Craig. And a second?
I'll second.
Steph? Action item on supplemental contract for Nikki Bostelman as head girls volleyball coach. Roll call?
Okay, so wait.
Wait.
So if you, are we voting to actually hire, or what are we voting here?
Well, I guess it doesn't particularly say. I would assume yes. I mean, that would be the...
It's not to hire, it's a...
It's an action item.
Action item, so what are we taking?
To post the position for a recommendation to hire her as the head coach.
Okay.
So this is not hiring her as a head coach.
Recommendation.
Hold on a second, I want to make sure I'm understanding.
Yes.
A yes vote would be supportive of Coach Bostelman, a no vote would be not supportive.
That's correct.
A yes vote is supportive, a no vote is not. Okay, I just want to make sure we're on the same page here.
And so, again, this is to post the position for the volleyball?
Yeah, this is only posting the position.
This is a posting, it's not hiring her.
Correct.
Okay, so wait.
Yeah, I want to make sure I'm clear, because to me, this isn't...
It would be the supporting of putting her on as the head coach next month.
So a yes vote would put her on the schedule next month to be voted on for the contract?
In the running for it, yes. Because it's still posted as of right now, so.
Okay.
I don't get that still, but...
Because it wasn't recommended, so it's an action item. So we are taking action to, I guess, therefore, recommend her for, on the next board agenda. Does that make sense? Because it wasn't recommended by the admin or Keith, and so we, as a board, are taking action to, as a board, recommend that her contract be put on for next month. Does that sound right? Clarify?
As long as we're on the same page, a yes is, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure we're on the same page. A yes is to support?
From the board.
From the board, to put her on the agenda next month.
To put her on the agenda.
A no would be, no, she's not going on the agenda.
We're on the same page, thank you.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comment, questions? Roll call.
Mr. Idan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Sure.
Mrs. Jones?
No.
Mr. Methman?
No.
Mrs. Carrier?
No. Motion pass.
Excuse me, this just means that we would vote again next month, correct?
Correct.
But she would be recommended.
So the board is recommending her to be put on the agenda next month.
Then, no, my understanding was that the next month would be when we would vote on that.
Correct.
Okay, so we'll just nip it in the bud, we'll say no. I'm sorry, I'm changing my...
Well, technically, you don't have to change, because we got three no's, so that means it's not going to go on the agenda next month.
Yeah, so, but I'm still changing mine. I apologize, I misunderstood, I thought we were going to take it to the next month.
If we got three votes, we would have. Okay, so you're a no. Okay. Did you get, I just want to make sure for...
I've got down as Mr. Idan as yes, the rest of the board, no's.
Okay, thank you. So one yes, four no, and the motion dies. Need a motion for employment of classified staff?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Galen? Minda, thank you. Recommend to approve Aubrey Giddings as classified substitute for the 2021 school year. Recommend issuing a continuing contract to the following classified staff, Annie Sterheim. Recommend issuing a two-year contract to the following classified staff, Tyler Scranton. Remind me again, why is Aubrey on twice?
One's for classified, one's for certified.
So she can fill both?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call?
Okay. Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Idan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0. Need another motion? For Ruth Ann?
I'll move. Second.
Craig, and we're going with Galen?
Yes.
Okay. Recommend issuing a five-year administrative contract to Ruth Ann Peerman as food service director beginning August 1st, 2021, and ending July 31st, 2026. You know, Mr. Hoffman, when you talked earlier about the two people who, like, you know, make a lot of money and need things, I also thought of Ruth Ann, and what an awesome job she does in the cafeteria and counting all those, and I know how much even those, even lunches and all of that tie into title work, and she does an excellent job down there, and we're very grateful. Roll call?
Mr. Idan?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0. Need a motion for other business?
I will move.
I'll second.
Steph? And Minda, thank you. Recommend to partner with the Ohio Health Department and Northwest Ohio Education Service Center to distribute Abbott COVID-19 card home test kits on a first come, first served basis to staff and students following the board's receipt of the signed consent and waiver. Recommend to extend recognition to Science Fair advisor Kathy Laney and faculty members and a host of volunteers for their work and dedication to students in preparation for the Science Fair. Recommend to extend recognition and congratulations to the following high school students for their superior award ratings at the regional science fair. Kyler Baird, Taylor Early, Joda Freese, Emily Taylor, Julia Garza, Emily Harmon, and Abby Miller.
Yeah, that's a lot of time and preparation and stress and anxiety for everybody involved, not just for the kids, so.
Congratulations to them, good job. Motion? Or, I'm sorry, roll call?
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Idan?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0. Any old business?
The Growing God's Way.
Yeah. I see Rick there made me think, and I, I don't know if you saw me, I'm flipping through here, like, I don't know how many times looking for it. I know I said something to Anita, but I think somehow in the passing spring break or something, it just didn't get on there. But I had every intention of that being on there for the board to approve it, saying that we would support the program that Rick has presented to us in the past as an after-school program for next school year. So I apologize for not having that on there. I'll put it on next month, and you can actually vote on it. But I think you guys are, in the past in talking, were all good with what we had set up. So, Rick, I apologize, I goofed. I thought that was on there, and when I saw it, I'm like, oh, well, we'll be approving that tonight, and so I apologize. Okay, that's all excepted. I appreciate every member of the board, would you see copying my letter? Yes. So they understand my thoughts? Yes, sir. If they have any questions, they can contact me. And my main point was just that if you have the discussion, there's then a verbal consent, and I just want to make sure that there's an understanding of what everyone's expectations and what we're going to do. My intention, I think, is important for them all to know that we're going to go ahead with this program.
What grades will that be for next year?
Well, we talked about eight through four, but I would need, we would need to work out, I don't know how we're going to start, how many grades, it's going to be somewhere in eight through four, I don't know if we'll be all eight through four, probably not. We'll start slow, make sure we have a good program. But just for information, some of you probably heard Lifewise program, that's what we talked about when we presented, and a number of schools are doing that in the area now. I think Arresville was, it started with BM this year, some other schools that are looking at it, I don't know, Defiance and Holly, going trace. And we'll be using the same material, we'll just be doing it after school, and we'll provide the instructor. And I also understand, Mr. Countryman, if you recall this, he committed that he would provide a bus, a bus driver, but we would be expected to provide the bus driver's salary, whatever that would be.
Correct.
I assume we reverse the school and kids.
Yeah.
But other than that, we have used to, we'd have to work out the timing, which I think would be right after school, and what facilities, what rooms, and then we would also provide instructor, which could be a current teacher or not, just depending on what we come up with. And I just need a confirmation that I think I'm doing that, at least I might have that, so that we can start fundraising and starting for, we'll just get the board rolling, because September will be here really soon, and I need to work with administration, work on all the details. Again, I apologize, Rick, I'm sorry. I understand, you've got a tough job.
Can we just, can't add a motion now, a resolution? I mean, if we could, I mean...
I think we've done something like that in the past.
Yeah, we've kind of added, you know, you can throw some wording together real quick, I mean...
The name of our, or we, the name we have is Growing God's Way. So we're established, we're, we're affiliated with the Hicksville Community.
Service Center. Hicksville Community Service Center?
Service Center, yeah. We're partnering with them. We're under their umbrella. So all our funding and everything will kind of be run through them, and they'll oversee our operations.
And establishes you as a nonprofit.
And establishes us as a nonprofit organization. And we've got officers, let me see, Alma, like, Gerald, Sir Gilford, and another officer. And Carol Gallup is our treasurer.
Okay, so, um, I don't know if this would work, Mr. Ruin or not, but if we put, uh, board support or whatever you use there at the beginning for Growing God's Way for an after-school program starting fall twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two?
And do we need to say something, authorize the superintendent to work out an agreement for transportation and reimbursement of costs, something to that effect?
We can add that, can't we, Mike?
Well, yeah, we're going to want that somehow, either in, in, in an agreement or right in here. We don't have agreement right now.
Well, I think if we start with the supportive program.
If we start with the next, just be more specific.
Let's do the sup, the support piece and then the specifics of the financials in the next, in the next meeting.
That works. Yeah, that's a good idea.
So right now I have motion to approve Growing God's Way program beginning with the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year.
Do we have after-school program?
As an after-school program.
Have an after-school program.
Okay.
Good.
Motion to approve Growing God's Way program be, beginning, or should I just say, motion to approve Growing God's Way beginning with the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year as an after-school program.
Perfect.
So I will move.
I'll second.
So we're going to go with Steph and Galen?
So first was Mrs.?
Steph?
Okay.
Galen, second.
Yep.
Okay.
Ready to vote?
Yep.
Go ahead. Roll call, please.
All right. Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes five zero. I do have one question. Um, we've talked before in the past, how wonderful our student breakfast program is and that it's free. Have we seen any increase?
Increase in, uh, attendance?
Participation?
In participation?
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't know for sure. I know as far as the funding overall with the lunchroom through the state, last month was our biggest receipt. So the, the number of meals were up that were served. Uh, could that be partly due to the number of days compared to other months? It could have been...
I'll just take an up is fine.
Okay, it was up. It was our best.
That's good.
Month financially.
All right. Just a reminder to everyone, we do have free breakfast for all the kiddos.
I know there are most boys and high school kids and whatnot. There's definitely more K-4 kids and early middle school kids, but they're, I, anywhere between twenty and forty middle school kids.
Wish we got more in there to take advantage of that.
High school kids will, will have a bad, a stomach.
Yep, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, but those, some of those elementary kids don't eat till late, so they could really use a breakfast.
Right.
So, all right. Any other discussion or any unannounced guests wishing to address the board?
Oh, I'd like to throw, toss something out real quick. I know last year because of COVID, things were a little bit different with the, the summer helpers. And I know the previous year, we kind of talked about a process on making sure that was open to all the kids. And I just want, I know that's probably going to be coming up on the next one. And, and that's, I just would like to reiterate, I would like to see that put out so everybody has, all kids in that age group has that opportunity to, to participate in that. And, you know, kind of a competitive process for them.
Thank you. I remember, we have talked about that in the past, because I remember, I think, even just interviewing. You know, applying for a job and interviewing is such a good, great experience for them.
Yeah, and again, I know it was two years ago, because last year, I don't know what happened, and it was COVID. I never brought it up, and I just know that this year's probably going to be, you know, and it's going to be coming up real soon. So I just want to toss that out there.
I can speak to that right now, Mr. Iden.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer's already put out the beeler for the students to see who's interested, at least in the tech department, and helping us, and also for, um, students throughout the school year. So that process, process already is...
Great.
Was that done through an email?
Everybody, or how does that?
I got two.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Methman.
Was that done through an email to the students?
An email, and he included, um, next year's freshman through seniors.
Great.
So that went up, the eighth graders through the eleventh graders this year.
That's awesome.
And I think we got like eleven responses back. Uh, part of it we tie in is how was your grades? Especially if you're interested in the after, not after school, the during school helping. You have to maintain a certain grade point average. But I know he had several. I want to say there was like eleven different kids that applied for it. So we're in the next phase of that process, discussing it and stuff like that. But that's, it just went out big last week. And he go on out here for six.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that. And let Mr. Schaefer know, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Uh, deadline is April twelfth. So the deadline is actually passed now.
So then who would be involved in asking for summer, like, assistance for the secretaries and stuff? Who would send out that message?
That would typically be Mrs. Walling, when she's ready to do that, will, will post that.
Okay.
Will they send an email?
It's amazing, it's amazing how, how last year's COVID ripped in spring. Two years ago, this would have been forever. It's like, uh, yeah, we did do that, didn't we?
We should touch base with Pam and Cheryl both on that to make sure that that gets posted.
I know in the past, in the summer, the summer helping on the high school side, typically some not, ex student at Hicksville, they either have to be a graduate or typically a college student. That's just because we're dealing with student record and access and stuff like that. So we try to, we hire some who's in high school.
For the office, huh?
For the office, yes.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Okay, we are going to be going into executive session for number one. Before we vote for that, I do want to just mention, though, that we, our next upcoming meeting will be Monday, May seventeenth, at five thirty. So I do need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll move. I'll second. Whichever way you put it, Mike, whatever.
Okay, about to find out.
And we'll plan for six thirty-five. Give you a couple of minutes, six thirty-five. Okay.
Ready?
And we will take no action afterwards. And like I said, our next one is May seventeenth, so roll call, please.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes five zero.